Good evening. I'll call this meeting of Moline City Council to order here at 6:01 PM in council chambers. We have a number of electronic attendance, correct? And you'll note the board appointments. These are reappointments to Youth Commission and Historic Preservation Commission. And so we'll start then with our presentations. Top Cop Award to Officer Cody Parmenter.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, Council. Thank you for letting me come before you today. I wanted, I know you probably saw the press release that we put out. This has already been disseminated to the media and the public. But I wanted to give you an opportunity to meet Officer Parmenter in person. An outstanding officer, an outstanding representation of the Police Department, and I think somebody you can be proud of serving on our Police Department and our community. Last year, about midway of last year, the Breakfast Optimists Club approached me and the Police Chief in East Moline and asked if we'd be interested in doing an Officer of the Year program that they were putting together. We put our heads together. They had some rough outlines to it, but ultimately, they formed a independent committee, no input from us other than the nominations, and they received nominations from both Moline and East Moline for outstanding achievement and awards that the Police Department thought should be considered by the optimists. And those of you that know the Optimists Club, they're founded in 1919, and they do work in their communities to promote good government, promote the military and patriotism, and support local youth. They're also well-known for that Avenue of Flags project you often see during holidays where they put the American flags out on the streets. So they designed this program to give an Officer of the Year and a Top Cop given to individual police officer who, in the opinion of the selection committee, was worthy of recognition for accomplishments in their work in the previous year. The Optimist Committee members judge applicants based on heroism, community service, meritorious performance, and club purpose. Applications were solicited, as I said, from the Moline and East Moline Police Departments, and the committee reviewed nine nominations and selected four finalists, two Officers of the Year, and one from each city. The committee then ultimately chose one of those Officer of the Year to be honored as a Top Cop. The committee chose Sergeant William Lynn from the East Moline Police Department as the Officer of the Year from East Moline, and Officer Cody Parmenter from the Moline Police Department as the Officer of the Year from Moline. And then ultimately, I'm proud to say that Cody Parmenter was awarded the Top Cop for the 2021 year. So to give you a background on the nomination, he was nominated by his Division Lieutenant Derek Colson, who said that Officer Cody Parmenter should be nominated for improving the safety and quality of life in our community, building community trust and collaboration, and enhancing the professionalism teamwork integrity of the department. And those are goals that I set forth at the beginning of the year for all the divisions to try to achieve. And Lieutenant Colson noted that Officer Parmenter made over forty-five felony arrests, mostly for the delivery or possession of methamphetamine or other controlled substances, made additional twenty-five arrests for driving under the influence. He made several arrests for gun crimes, unlawful use of weapon, and armed violence. Furthermore, and I think this is a really cool thing, you may have seen this on our Facebook page, Officer Parmenter developed a community-oriented policing program to emphasize the importance of staying in school and being a productive member of our community. And this is difficult for somebody on third shift to do, if you've ever worked shift work, to then, you know, motivate yourself to get up and do stuff during the day is another piece of motivation. But this program strives to build and strengthen the relationship between children in the community and the Moline Police Department by recognizing students for their outstanding achievements and police visiting them at school for a pizza party. So Officer Parmenter was also awarded a lifesaving award for his actions on March fifteenth, 2021, when he saved the life of a citizen inside a burning house fire. So I wanted to bring Cody in front of you today to just reintroduce you. I mean, you may have seen him at a swearing in. He's a fairly new officer. I'm certainly very proud of Cody. He recently was selected amongst a very competitive application process for a position in our Crime Prevention Unit, so he will actually be going to Daze to do even more great work in our Community Events Team and around town this time during the day. So we'll see what he can do for you on a more normal schedule. And his wife, Megan, is here, and they're two young boys. So if you wouldn't mind, I don't have any additional awards to give him, but if I could just bring him forward, and maybe you could give him a round of applause if you so see fit. Cody? I won't put you on the spot to make a speech, but maybe you want to bring your family up and we'll take a photo here. I think you may have been one of the options. It probably has one of these COVID photos of getting sworn in with masks. So you wanted to stand there in a horseshoe and get a nice little fireproof blanket. All right, buddy. One, two, three. All right, great. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, our next presentation is the 2022 Keep Moline Beautiful Commission City of Moline Superhero Award.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all, City Councils. It's been a few years since we've been here in front of you of most of our programs. Obviously, we're very socially required that social interactions, so they've kind of been put on pause. And so we're so happy to be here this evening to present this year's recipients for our superhero award. The award is given out to individuals, groups, and businesses. It's open to individuals, groups, and businesses that have gone above and beyond in their efforts to recycle, reuse, repurpose materials, also for cleanup and beautification efforts. And so we have two recipients this year. And the first award is going to be presented by our Commissioner Pam Nelson, and the second will be presented by Sue Ratkowitz.
Well, good evening to all of you. Shirley Morton is truly a superhero, and I'm going to give you just a little bit of a glimpse of why we nominated her and why she is going to receive this award tonight. So Shirley is devoted to environmental causes since she became a resident of Moline over forty years ago. So she was really recycling before recycling was even cool. And well before any of the Illinois Quad Cities had established any recycling programs whatsoever. Her and her family set up separate garbage cans in their garage for glass and plastic and paper and magazine paper and all sorts of things way back forty years ago. And so they had all these garbage cans in their garage, and they would just sort and then take themselves, because we really didn't have recycling centers back then, they would sort the trash and take it to the Rock Island, which was the only recycling center at that time. Her roadside litter collection started decades ago when she started picking up unflattened cans for a friend of hers who was looking for some additional revenue. So unflattened cans could be taken over to Davenport for the five percent or whatever refund. So that's how she started recycling, and it just kind of evolved from there. Now she is an icon along Moline's Twelfth Avenue. She almost daily, when she's in town and not traveling, she will walk Twelfth Avenue from Thirty-Fifth Avenue in Moline at Kennedy Drive's intersection clear to Twenty-seventh Street at Twelfth Avenue in Moline. It's a five-mile route. She does it nearly daily. She told me just the other day that on a good day, if she wasn't recycling, it would take her about an hour, fifteen minutes, hour twenty minutes. With the picking up of the trash along that five-mile route, it takes her over two hours, and she does that almost daily. So she does have, she stops along the way. There is a couple of litter recyclers or litter bins along the way that she'll drop her bags of trash into as she goes. But two hours every day is pretty remarkable. She picks up anywhere between one and five bags of trash daily. She says it's the single-use drinking containers are the biggest culprits. Of course, masks recently, but nicotine products are also a big part of that collection process. She sees an uptick in the litter collection during the school year. Students seem to be notorious for just throwing trash away. Shirley told me a story that one day she was out picking up trash, and some woman just rolled down her window and threw out a whole sack of like her, you know, fast food trash just right in front of Shirley, thinking that was her only job was to just pick up everything that grew on the ground. So, but in addition to the picking up trash, one of Shirley's biggest accomplishments is being a role model. She talks to a lot of the kids along the route, particularly at the Wilson Junior High School, Middle School. And she gets into some great conversations with these youths and has really had some influence over how they're viewing what they can do and what they shouldn't be doing for their community. So some of the students have modeled her example and organized their own trash collection at different times. So last year Shirley collected a hundred and sixteen dollars in bills and change, but so that is her really only incentive other than to help the environment. So in addition to Shirley's trash pickup along Twelfth Avenue, she has some other important accomplishments. She is the recipient of the Moline Adopt a Street Program. One of her neighbors nominated her for that. She also is a certified dive instructor, so not only does she pick up trash here in the Quad Cities, but as she goes on her diving expeditions around the world, she helps clean up our oceans as well from the trash deposit there. And then the scope of her efforts go beyond even that. She attracts bluebirds that flock to her heated birdbath in February. She attracts and feeds hummingbirds throughout the summer. She fosters monarchs, growing milkweed and then harvesting and sharing the seeds with other monarch advocates. Last year Shirley successfully released a hundred and fifty monarchs. So anyway, that is my little summary of what Shirley does. She also, she's very active in the church and makes some parish halls and has some scars for children as well. But Shirley, thank you so much for all your work and for being such a wonderful role model and advocate for the environment of West Houston. Here is your award.
Just a big thank you. If people wouldn't litter, I wouldn't have a job. Mary Lind is the chief guardian of Keep Moline Beautiful Garden, Keep Moline Beautiful's Garden Guardian Program, where volunteers adopt one of seventeen gardens along the Ben Butterworth Parkway. For years, when Mary walked by the river, she was motivated by her love of gardening to spiff up the existing gardens by pulling weeds and deadheading. She realized that tending to the parkways' many gardens would take more than the time allowed, even though her friends know her as the Energizer Bunny. As a volunteer of the newly-formed Keep Moline Beautiful Commission in 2008, she spearheaded the development of garden guardians, participants who assist in the beautification of specific gardens along the parkway. Each year, in addition to organizing the volunteers, Mary assists with plant selection, garden design, plant care information, and any other gardening related questions. She regularly updates the volunteers about information pertinent to the gardens, as well as offering encouragement to the gardeners. As one of the volunteers stated at the end of last year's gardening season, "Thank you, Mary, for your leadership with the gardens. Your timely messages, advice, plant suggestions, and purchases go a long way in keeping us informed and motivated. We couldn't do it without you." Passersby regularly comment on the beauty of the gardens and their appreciation for the volunteers who tend them. Mary often comments about making plants happy by taking proper care of them. Thanks to Mary's guidance, the Ben Butterworth Parkway Gardens are a happier place for all. Congratulations and thank you. Thank you all. I just wanted to say that it's my firm belief that citizens of any community are looking for a way to give back and make that place a more beautiful, comfortable, safe, and healthy place to live. And through this commission, I've had the opportunity to give people an organized way to give back to Moline. I couldn't do it without the great support of the city and the public workspeople who support me. Thank you.
And one more presentation, the 2022 Water Art Contest winner announcement. Mr. Lodi.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a couple of new members of Team Moline, relatively new members of Team Moline I want to introduce you to. Charlie Brown, he's a microbiologist, is now managing our laboratory. He's been with us for about six months, and he has managed our Consumer Confidence Report and Art Contest. And then this is Misty. And Misty, while I cannot reveal her true identity, I can tell you that she has a long lineage of history within Moline, okay? And so Charlie's gonna talk to you about our art contest.
So every hour, every day, all year long, the Water Department works very hard to bring the city clean, safe, fresh-tasting water. They do that so that when you need it, the water is there. So it's there when you need it. This year, the Water Department asked the third graders of Moline to help embody this concept in the form of art. We were able to get ten schools to participate in our art contest. Each art class chose a winner, and then a school chose a winner from those art class winners. Finally, we had a citywide winner chosen from the schools. This year's winner comes from Miss Kayla Reed's art class at Hamilton Elementary, and this year's winner is Miss Genevieve Witt. As you can see, her art depicts a family cooling off at the pool, much when we feel like we might need water the most, and that would be in the heat of summer. What Genevieve's art will be displayed along with the other top school winners here at City Hall for a couple of weeks, and it will just be displayed at the library for a couple of weeks for the whole community to enjoy. And then with her art will actually be entered into the national contest. So if you would join me in congratulating Miss Genevieve Witt and her parents Andrew Witt and Jessica Witt in her fine excellence in art.
The next item on our agenda are proclamations. We have several. First, a proclamation from the Abate of Illinois Inc. to declare May 2022 as Motorcycle Awareness Month. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas, safety is the highest priority on the highways and streets of our city and the state, and whereas the great state of Illinois is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, and whereas the members of Abate Illinois Inc. Brotherhood aim toward education, continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness in high school drivers' education programs, and to the general public in our city and state presenting motorcycle awareness programs to over one hundred and twenty thousand participants in Illinois over the past seven years, and whereas during the month of May, all roadway users shall unite in the safe sharing of roadways within Moline and the state of Illinois, now therefore, I Sangitha Raiapudi, Mayor of Moline in the great state of Illinois, in recognition of thirty-five years of Abate Illinois Inc. and over three hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred and eighteen registered motorcyclists statewide, and in recognition of the continued role Illinois serves as a leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Motorcycle Awareness Month." Do we have a representative? Great. Come to the podium, please.
To say thank you, and hopefully, please be safe and watch for us. We're hard to see, I know, but we try our best. That's about it, really.
What's your name again?
Jim.
Thank you so much for being here. We'll send you the official proclamations very shortly.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Second proclamation is Drinking Water Week from American Water Works Association. Whereas, water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy, and whereas, we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend, and whereas each resident of the city of Moline is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to become involved in local water issues by learning about this valuable resource, now therefore, I Sangitha Raiapudi, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim May one through seven, 2022, as Drinking Water Week. Mr. Lodi.
Your Honor, two things real quick. One, I think it's very ironic that Genevieve happened to frame her photo about a swimming pool when we, as the city, have chosen this year to make such a tremendous investment in aquatics. And then number two, the theme of the contest is there when you need it. And so we, as water professionals, believe that our consumers take our products for granted. They expect it to be there, and we realize that we're working behind the scenes, and we are a vital part of the vitality of the community. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And our last proclamation today is requested by Joe Kullunbeck, Assistant Public Works Director, to proclaim the month of May 2022 as Public Safety, excuse me, Building Safety Month. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas, the city of Moline is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, Safety for All, Building Codes in Action, the theme for Building Safety Month 2022, encourages us all to raise awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to all of our benefit. And whereas, each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state buildings. Now therefore, I Sangitha Raiapudi, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities." Mr. Kullunbeck.
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. Just want to say thanks for the recognition and the partnership that we build through the community. It really is a true partnership from developer to owner, to our many tradespeople out there every day constructing, and your many municipal partners on the backside ensuring safety. It is a partnership. We work hard to foster that, and this recognition is a big step for that. So thank you very much.
Is there any public comment this evening? Do not see any. So we shall move. Questions on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the Cow Agenda items. The first one is an ordinance amending Chapter thirty-four, Water and Sewers. The Moline Code of Ordinances, Section thirty-four dash forty-one zero zero. Purpose Intent, Section thirty-four dash forty-two zero one, Drainage Permits, and Section thirty-four dash forty-two oh three, Detention System Criteria. By repealing said sections in their entirety and enacting in lieu thereof new sections, thirty-four dash forty-one zero zero, thirty-four dash forty-two oh one, and thirty-four dash forty-two oh three, dealing with the same subject matter.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Went. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Went.
Yeah, I just want to thank Andy and the group for making this update. But I did want to comment that the last week we have taken a vote to do additional changes to the stormwater regarding development. And so hopefully that'll be coming up. I know it was mentioned that we were going to be talking about this. I was, eh, maybe it'll be incorporated with it, but yeah, so sometime in the near future. Do you guys have a timeframe for that?
I would guess within the next quarter or so.
Okay, all right. Thank you. This is a good first start.
Mr. Schmidt.
I had a couple of questions for just for information. I love the changes, and the recommendation makes total sense on going from the five-year report to how we're changing that for the annual report by the staff. I love the way that's formulated. We spend the time doing the work instead of chasing after people to do the work. Wonderful. As we talk about those larger reports with the professional engineers, is there any, how often is that typically going to be required, do we think? Is it going to be less than five years? Is five years about right, but sometimes it'll stretch to six or seven? How does that going to change for those businesses?
Class-two permits are driven by the size of the development, and I want to put a challenge out to our Economic Development Department and say that if we can, you know, ramp up economic development, then there'll be much, many more of those class-two permits. But as things stand now, I hope I'm answering your question. There's really only been like one or two per year for the last two or three or four years.
So I meant, when we do that inspection, how frequently do you expect any given pond to require an engineering report?
We will inspect them annually. The intent is that we would inspect all of them annually, and then when it comes time for the five-year, we would waive the requirement for the five-year if we feel as staff that the detention pond is in good working condition.
And I guess my question, how long do we think that usually would take then between?
It just, it depends on the circumstances, how much debris is coming into it, how well the owner is maintaining vegetation and so forth.
That makes sense.
That's your one.
Yeah, but overall, you think that's going to reduce the number and the frequency of it?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
This is Prodi Bell.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Pairing, uh, Mr. Schmidt.
I'd just like to make a motion to remove from that Section B regarding those engineer reports to delete the last sentence where it says, "An annual report is not required. The year of the five-year report is due." And I'm making that motion because we're no longer having five-year reports.
So as you proposed, does the language read that we would still have the authority to require a report periodically?
Yes.
Is that the intent?
Where it says, "At the request of city staff, the basin should be inspected by a professional engineer." registered in the state of Illinois. A report of this inspection shall be submitted to the city engineer." The inspection shall include, it used to say, "At five-year intervals, the basin shall be inspected by." And then the last sentence was just, "An annual report is not required the year the five-year report is due."
Understood. Second.
Amendment has been motioned and seconded, first by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Timian. Discussion?
On the Section B?
But isn't that report now being done by city staff?
There is no longer a five-year report. The five-year report is being replaced by a, as requested by City Hall, report. So they're waiving a ci- uh, they used to waive the annual, uh, when a five-year was done. Now the only time we would do that level of engineering report would be after the city report has already been completed.
That's correct.
Okay, alright.
I thi- I think it was just a cleanup thing.
Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That amendment passes. So we're back to the original ordinance update. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Yep, moving to one point two, An Ordinance Amending, Chapter Twenty, Motor Vehicle and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix Ten. Thereof parking prohibited at any time by including Thirty-sixth Avenue on the north side for a distance of forty feet east of the stop sign at Forty-first Street. Nate, did you wanna summarize? We missed that in the last.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, I know, that's alright. I mean, the overview's pretty clear. Our, our traffic engineering committee is basically making that recommendation based on a meeting they held on March first.
Move to approve, second.
Oh, whoa. Alderman O'Brien, motion, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Uh, discussion.
Just, just one thing, Your Honor. We're notifying the residents, right? I mean, did not, the residents get notified when we?
Yes, I caught the gentleman on Saturday. Uh, I couldn't catch him during the week, but I did catch the gentleman on Saturday.
Cause I've been getting hours on, and, you know, we're, uh, the street is a certain distance across, you're taking away the parking on one side because it's not wide enough to do that. And I've been getting calls from people that maybe they've tried to notify him and they went home or whatever.
I actually caught him at home, in this case.
Well, this is, this is not this, it's something else. But there's other parts of the city where they're removing parking. For, for good reasons, I'm not saying it's the wrong reason, I just would like to make sure the residents get notified that what's going on. You know, they see a sign going up, and it's like, call your Alderman.
Yes, and I agree, they, they should be notified prior to the signs.
Yeah, no, as, I can answer that as well. As a general rule, given what happened there many months ago, when there were two streets, uh, that were proposed, and this council voted unanimously on both of those, uh, relocations of the no parking signs, voted unanimously on both cases to, uh, shut that down. That was the learning lesson, and yes, residents are notified as we are moving forward from that day for, from that day and time.
Thank you.
Mr. Went.
Yeah, and, and two, actually, I hope they're getting notified before the spray goes out and the flags, that's usually when we start getting.
That's when you get your phone calls, yes.
Uh, the second thing is, and, and this is fine, but moving forward in the future, historically, we've always got a diagram and a picture, like an aerial of these changes.
That did not get attached.
I, I don't think that was.
That, that was an oversight.
Okay, and ju- it just, because, I mean, it's fine, you know, go into Google Earth and you kinda work your way around, but sometimes.
Okay.
There was one developed for that, for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. One point three, An Ordinance Amending, Chapter Two, Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix Four. Thereof three-way stop intersections by adding the intersection of Thirty-Fifth Avenue and Fourteenth Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
By Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman Went. Discussion? Mr. Timian.
I just wanna, uh, thank you, uh, the traffic committee for this. This is on, uh, a frequent route of mine, riding, and it is a blind corner on a fairly steep hill, so it's, it's a really good addition, just for all-around safety.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Yeah, I wanna add, it's at the end of my street, and it, we used to call that Danger Hill.
Yes.
It's a little bit better than it used to be, but, uh, um, it is, uh, for a myriad of reasons, it's a, it's a, it's a, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Moving to our informational, Mr. Vitas, on the Strategic Plan, Action Plan, Quarter One Report.
Sure, very good, Mayor, thank you, and, uh, thank you, Council, for this opportunity to just kinda review where we're at. Uh, as you know, back in February, first week, we released the, the initial action plan, and in that action plan, all eighty-five of your strategic goals were identified, laid out in task format, and then what we did is we created a dashboard. If you'll look back then, you'll see that there were a lot of red lights, right? Because we were just issuing it, we were launching programs here in the city. Going forward, at the end, at the end of the first quarter, meaning the end of March, uh, staff, directors, and their staffs worked, staff worked, uh, together with my office and with Macy in particular, to actually start to go through those and to update those based upon, you know, where we are today across the board on all of the specific strategic, uh, goal projects and programs that needed to be launched. Some of them, of course, won't be launched until next fiscal year, and of course, those are going to stay red unless for some reason they should move up. But for the moment, right now, given the funding and given where we're at, uh, the action plan, as well as the dashboard, are accurate as of the release for this particular meeting tonight. So I would expect they will change. Some things have been completed, as you can see, they turned, uh, they, they went to a full blue light. Some things remain red, have not started yet, but for the most part, I think staff has done a great job of actually launching the strategic objective, uh, goals that were approved by Council, and as really based on citizen input last summer. So I'm, I'm happy with the end result. I think we're, uh, we're on target moving forward with many of our projects. There are very few, if any, that are, that are behind or on hold. Again, it's, uh, it's a new tool, there's a learning curve happening here, and, uh, we'll be looking to refine it as we go forward in future years. But for right now, this is our tracking mechanism, and in addition to this, of course, the other tracking mechanism is the, the monthly status and information report, which speaks to a lot of the items that are inside the action plan, but then speak to items that are not even in the action plan or not even a strategic goal, and that's gonna be released as well. Next, second one will be released next month. Beginning of the month. It's due Friday.
Questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, yeah, from Miriam out, is next month's work session?
Strategic planning.
So it's gonna be talking about?
Where we're at, where we're headed.
Okay, so what, what, that's when we'll get into the more, and then the things that were direction but weren't on?
I've suggested that unfinished business, um, be a part of our discussion for how is it gonna fit in, where are we at getting, how, how are we working? We, we're already working with Macy to work through the lists that have been shared, to see like, what ways we can prioritize them, et cetera. Cause it's, it's, cause there's a lot there, so it's part of the three-legged stool that we have to discuss on Macy.
So it will, that will be brought, what can I answer? It, it will be brought forward. Um, staff has been working on it diligently, not only to determine, uh, which of these are directives and when they might have occurred. Some of them we just can't find, I'll be honest with you, we can't find them. But they're still here, and they're not going away just because we can't find them. The staff does have a comprehensive list, we've done, we've done our deep dive, we have the list, it's been shared with the executive directors. Uh, they are reviewing it, they're identifying where they're at on some of these, are they on hold? Did they never, was it never, uh, addressed? But we are going through carefully, methodically, to ensure that each and every directive that came from council, not only this one, but the previous council, are on this list. So it would.
Would you be able to share that with us as well?
That's what you gave us in different.
It's based on, it's in a different format, but it's based on a lot of information you shared with me. I'm, it's not complete. I'm waiting to get the input from the executive directors.
Okay.
Once I have that, then I'm gonna pass, then I, then I will distribute. It's a work in progress.
And so you want any updates that we might have on the, the dashboard or comments or whatever?
If you could send those to me and copy Macy, that would be great, because between the two of us, we're always working on it. Perfect, thanks, you're welcome.
Our other informational, uh, is about amending Chapter Four, Alcoholic Liquor for the Moline Code of Ordinances. I mentioned in my multiple emails this over the week, and apologies for so many, but that we do have quite a few executive items, so our, our discussion had been, Mr. Stopless, that we would, since this is pretty focused conversation on what you've provided, if we use forty-five minutes or so, maybe by seven-thirty, then we, we will stop there and move, uh, bring things back, because we're taking chips away at the discussion as we go on this particular chapter. Is that cleared, everyone? Okay. Thank you.
Right, so issues we probably provided you, uh, last month, with a memo with suggestions to, um, amend Chapter Four beyond update, so, uh, we talked about single, uh, serve last time. Uh, we thought we would focus tonight on, uh, reducing the number and, and description of the license classes. So in our memo of last month, we, uh, not only did a survey of other communities and the overall number of licensed classes that they had, but we made some general recommendations as to, uh, collapsing some of yours in Juana, just a few addressing those special, uh, licenses, or special event licenses. And then from our memo, Janine did further work, um, and, uh, looked at it from administratively, what was her experience, um, and what had she seen from licensed holders in terms of, you know, what they really needed and what they were applying for, and in general, how could we make this a more efficient and, and understandable process? So from that work, you received a per memo, which then further, uh, recommended more specific, uh, changes to our, uh, licensed classifications, which we wholly support, um, as a basis of discussion and review with you, Council, to, um, uh, get your recommendation and direction to bring back actual ordinance, uh, renewing changes. So I, I welcome your, uh, input here, Janine, as well, but what, what we have looked at is, uh, consolidating into Class A a number of licensed, uh, classes that Perma exists, and to focus Class A on on premises consumption. So make it a bigger, uh, definition and issue of Class A license to a number of different establishments that Perma might need a Class A and an option, or, um, any number of other variations. But I would defer to you, Janine, to talk further about this if you could.
Sure, thank you. So one of the things that, um, well, in putting this together, I had taken into account what I had heard from council members, and then also the experiences that I had had with licensees, especially at renewal. They were very confused by the, the number of classifications, and then specifically at the, um, the options. Where we were up to ten different options, some of those only applied to maybe one, um, business. And so we really tried to look at, um, more clearly defining the different classifications, and then determining which options do we continue to need. Um, the biggest change, and one of the things that I had heard from council, um, in discussion, was if this works for a municipality like Chicago, why can't it work for us? And so I looked at, um, some of the different, there were ten different, um, municipalities that Ansel Glink had looked at, then we also looked at Chicago to see what they were doing. And this very first classification, Class A, was taken from Chicago, and that is consumption on premises, incidental activity. And so if you look at it, um, and if you were to look at, um, comparing to the classifications we currently have, many of those read exactly the same with the exception of the definition of the ti- the type of business. So, um, what you see happening at a restaurant, um, may be pretty much the same as what you're seeing happen at a bowling alley. It's onsite consumption, they can both sell, um, alcohol to be taken off premises. And then, I hesitate to get into this, but Alderman Schmidt and I were talking about it beforehand. The biggest change with this would be looking at gaming, because we would have to either say, no gaming for restaurants anymore. I mean, that was still grandfather in the current ones, um, and we already have a moratorium, so we're not issuing at this time. But that would mean moving forward, um, even when there was a license or a license becomes available, we wouldn't issue to restaurants. Or we say, anyone in this class would be eligible to apply. Now, one of the things we can always say is that it has to come before council for approval. So I would say that this classification is probably the one that where we let Class A absorb many of the others that were listed here, but, um, in looking at that, I think that is much simpler for them, and then we look at some of the different options. Class B, um, is the same, but we let Class B kind of absorb, um, the fraternal and veteran organizations, and then we added, um, liquor producer and reseller. This is something that, again, Chicago is doing. The way we were hoping to bring, and we've talked about bringing it to our downtown, but anywhere in the city, is to bring in a winery, maybe, so, um, somebody who would have onsite, um, consumption of wine, just like we do our brewers, so these are producers, and so they, they are separated out a little bit, that's a little bit different. But they all have the same criteria, um, criteria, and, um, the sub-points underneath are identical, so it's easy to consolidate those. They are all able to have gaming now, and they would continue to. And then the one thing that is different in the case of these three, the Class B, Double B, and Triple B, is, um, like many of the other municipalities, including Chicago, it would allow, um, anyone under twenty-one to enter if they're with, not an adult, but a parent or guardian, is what is stated. Um, and so they are never able to sit at the bar, just like they couldn't, they were able to go into a veterans organization prior. They could never sit at a bar. This would be true of taverns, if they wanted to go into one, um, that currently, let's say, one like Hathner's. Currently, they can't go in because they're Class B. They would be able to as long as they don't sit at the bar. But they would have to be accompanied by a parent or guardian. It's a little bit different, but I thought it really brought us a little closer to that discussion of incidental activity. Because we were saying, well, if we start to look at the fifty percent, which in our review of these other municipalities, when they talk about incidental activity, they're talking about fifty percent of revenue. So we were looking at, maybe looking at some different factors, but at this point, even if we just look at that, it brings us a little bit closer to that, because it doesn't mean that we have to actually reclassify them. They could still stay at that. Rather than read through all of this, maybe I would. Um rather than read through all this, maybe I would open it up and see if you all had any questions, Alderman Timian?
Uh we currently have a, I'm I'm sorry, Your Honor.
That's okay.
We currently have a pour option for class C and I noticed that is not here.
We moved that to a new classification and I can tell you why we did that and that what we're proposing is a specialty classification. So that would be, and I kinda named those that are, you know, stationers or have, you know, make your own art or candles, things like that. Right now, we have um a pour your own candle that wanted to do BYOB and that's allowable by class. But if they were to want to sell, this would allow them to then get this license and they could actually sell if they wanted to. Um what that allows us to do is, or what it steers us away from is, at renewal, after this past renewal um period, we had already added the class, or rather, option eight, which we did for one particular retailer that had specialty items. Um but then every class C, C was applying for option eight, they all wanted to pour onsite. That's not always appropriate for a convenience store and I don't think that was the intent of council.
Correct.
So in then shifting away from an option and actually making it a specific classification, I think then we don't have that issue.
So that would be class F.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Other questions, comments, Mr. Went?
So I I I like this and um I think it does kinda get more to the point of uh my son else goes, hey, let's go get a burger at Hafner's. I can't take it.
I know.
Um but uh the question becomes for the class A now. Um would all of our current class K's?
We've always known that when class K sunsets, that they can convert to an A or B because the code allows that and we anticipate that probably will happen.
But but as it stands here, there could be as many K, I mean, so in any K could could claim a class A, right?
Mm-hmm.
And so our limitation of five or the sunset or whatever, all of a sudden this just opens it up. We could wind up with a proliferation of ten of them in the city all claiming class X.
Let's see what Mr. Stappel says.
Well, they would get to meet the requirements of class A and and we would, you know.
And I think they do, don't they?
Not the incidental activity.
Right. So the incidental, as opposed to primary, you'll get to deal with it, so.
But I I think in class A, the alcohol is incidental to their gaming. The consumption of alcohol on premises is incidental to their gaming, their primary purpose.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So, I mean, you could.
But the code only allows them and and we're not proposing changing that the K would have to convert to an A or a B and they have to function well, that was as a restaurant.
Yeah.
Or but they can't function as, I mean, it's not listed here that they can function as a video gaming establishment, but have to be one of those different types that are listed there.
Uh listed where?
Right, in the in A section, is that what you're talking about?
Restaurant, hotel, banquet hall, theater, bowling alley.
Right.
Yes, but I believe it's the chili bowl situation.
Yes.
That we're discussing.
Yeah, or the, yeah, or what's a recreational facility or we got a gym that is, you can come and do push-ups. I I I just, because people will play with it and I just wanna make sure that we're closed whatever.
I mean, one of the municipalities I looked at um had listed laundromat. We don't have that issue right now, let's not open it up to that, so we didn't add it. We only spoke to the ones that we currently have.
As opposed to trying to capture everything that could.
Right, we just spoke to what we currently have to make sure that we were serving them well.
Got it, Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, I I think the direction this is going, simplifying things makes a lot of sense. I think that whatever the requirements are, there will be people trying to take advantage or see how they can work their way around it. And 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 how we can think that through and try and avoid that makes sense. I don't think that looking at this, we can really totally separate this from the incidental or primary business because I think that this is built on that policy decision. Um to even call something incidental activity when we have not yet decided what incidental activity is, seems like a strange choice. Um and and I guess I would like to step forward and say, as I was reading through the definitions and the codes and looking through everything, I read through what our definition of the code of is as a restaurant. And it gives broad language uh related to how how that needs to present itself. As any public place kept, used, maintained, advertised and held out to the public as a place where the sale of food is the principal business purpose, where meals are actually prepared and regularly served without sleeping accommodation. It goes on a little, but that hits the big points. Um obviously, we couldn't use that exact definition here. I am in favor of stepping away from a revenue indicator of primary business in favor of a definition in that style. I think it allows for a business to put out there and to push and to try. And I think that different revenue sources have different levels of success. And um and it always will come back to the gaming piece where these, if a restaurant or bar has been allowed to have a gaming machine and it's been very successful, I don't think pulling that back makes sense as long as they are following that definition. And I think that definition for years has not been enforced well. And I think as we start to make those efforts to step up that enforcement, that will help to solve that problem. And and that that to me is the right way forward.
So just so I understand how you're describing it, you're really talking about a functional definition, right? How a place, an establishment functions as opposed to what it produces.
Yes, and 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 we'd have to obviously rework that language and there could even be certain subsets like to qualify as this, you have to have that, you know, we could include for a restaurant must have these things, a bowling alley must have lanes, things of of a similar nature.
But we've got the chili bowl that have a hood and met all the restaurant definitions and it was just a.
I but it but but and I think I would look at this and say, it does not appear that it does meet the restaurant definition.
No, no, they got the restaurant license originally because they met exactly the rest, I mean, our staff gave it, so because they said this feeds all of our record requirements. They installed a hood, they didn't use it, but.
Well, and where meals are actually prepared and regularly served is the piece that should be on the renewal be their problem.
Crackpot, yeah. So I I understand what you're saying, I'm just, I I'm just saying that unless you are very specific about it, your revenue, you can't hide because you gotta pay taxes, you gotta do those things. And so that is a definition that is clear. If this is your primary purpose or this is your incidental purpose, you know, we can change the percentages or whatever, but it is a known factor. The other things you get into and it.
Can I ask you a question of the clerk and uh our legal counsel? When it comes to reporting their income, how easy is it for them to fudge those numbers when you're dealing with the kind of definition you're setting? I'm just.
Other than it's a felony?
Well, and speaking to our finance manager, those are reported, but they're not audited statements that they're coming from. So it's just their submission of those. Um with the exception of gaming, which goes to the state and that's a little bit different.
Okay.
But if this is something that you all have an appetite for us to pursue, we can, I mean, I can talk to Chicago and see how, I mean, they're using fifty percent. I can ask, are they looking at other factors, how are they defining? Are they you doing it in terms of function? We can look a little further.
Mr. Stappel's.
So we have talked for quite a while about expanding the definition of incidental and primary beyond just revenue and adding other factors. So a multi-factor uh definition, which might be a better test for how they are truly operating. As we experienced in hearings on this, um a number of conditions can affect revenue and that might not be a a good test on its own. So we could bring back to you, which we had contemplated, um a a different definition which might help um which might help better to define what class A is or class B or any of our um licensed classes so that there are more factors to look at and maybe that would uh make them more comfortable with this.
Well, what you're saying, and I I weigh in here only as the liquor commissioner and having to enforce things and uh review stuff. Uh that's what I've preferred is to look for a multi-factor some way, but I also think it is a, it is a middle road if it is not unwieldy, where we get some kind of clear, very clear statements and clear expectations, right? If there's a way to combine this by getting it defined more appropriately, that then that's what I would like to look at, but but it's up to you all, I mean, they they need direction from you all.
I would like to see multi-factor, just to see what the language, you know, the logic, logic, decision tree would look like.
We can make it worse.
That's our head nod and the replaced thumbs up. Okay.
So this is still a work in progress.
Yes.
So we're checking in with you tonight on this, but both of them will do more work. There are pretty big changes here, so if you certainly don't wanna do it, it's.
Mr. Went?
Now, this isn't one of the suggested changes, but it's every time you read it, something else pops out at you. Um there's the provision, and it's in our current code, about if you want to shut down for a private event, that you have to write a note to the mayor and tell her, hey, uh we're we're having a Christmas party tonight and, you know, but I can only do three parties a year? What's the concept behind that?
I think some of it might have been so they weren't, so they were truly functioning as a restaurant or as a tavern and not like a rental hall.
Right.
Or something like that, so I don't know it came, well, but what we're proposing here is special use permits. What used to be option six, which is onsite public property, or option seven onsite special use, we're proposing two special use permits that would come out of the mayor and clerk's office and we would just pretty much give them a letter, like we do for option seven right now and say, we acknowledge and approve you having this special event onsite. Um again, if we use the example of Hafners, they used to have an annual Hafner Fest. We'd always write them a letter every year saying we acknowledge and that's fine and then let our um first responders know that that's going on.
I will say, we have had a hearing, um Chief Gault can weigh in on this if he needs to, but there there's, when when places have private events and don't like follow those rules, right? And if they were doing that over and over again, it can lead to mu- chaos in the streets. I mean, downtown, you know, there were, there was advertising, et cetera, we talked about that. So this is, this is, it's it sounds kinda trivial, but but I hear what you're saying, I I totally hear what you're saying. But I think there is a need, especially with A and B, for the special use things to be pretty tight.
Alex, so do you?
Uh along that line, uh you know, I'm thinking of uh class F mostly because uh I'm friends with uh the Tribbles from Watermark. Uh they used to have, be able to have special use permits a couple times a year before they had, you know, uh wine tasting or just like a free champagne flute on uh retail week or, you know, whatever it is. But since they got their liquor license, their understanding is they can no longer do the free, you know, um.
Tasting.
Taste, or I don't ta- I don't know if it's tasting or if it's just like uh like uh the lighting on the commons will hand out champagne as part of an event. Because they have the liquor license, they can no longer do that. Is that still?
No, they can.
They can.
With a liquor license, they can definitely do that.
Okay, then maybe then that's just a confusion.
Well, the the training was just on the fourteenth, so hopefully they've followed up if they had any questions.
And that'll be something, you'll get that in the next status information report about um Ansel Glink and Mark Heinley put on a training that we had on the fourteenth and it was very good, well-received. But it was really a nice opportunity to meet with those owners and liquor managers and answer their questions. Um you might be thinking of um Tribble Point. I don't know that, I mean, without a liquor license, they were never given a special use permit before. But Tribble Point was because they always had a special event for first responders and so they did it onsite and they received a letter for special use option seven, so.
I was thinking of Watermark, but I can, I can follow up offline about that.
Mr. Schmidt and then Mr. O'Brien.
Um. I I think on everyone's point about the events, uh they call my eye too, but we also have banquet halls now would have a class A license and only allowing a banquet hall to have an event three times a year seems counter to the business model. So that's probably just something to take a closer look at, but my um I would be interested in changing our Sunday hours to match the Monday through Thursday hours on most classifications. Um I am curious if there is any legal consideration or law enforcement consideration that would say we should not allow that Sunday morning from six to ten AM to be a time when those venues could serve alcohol.
Chief Gault?
Um is there a law enforcement consideration of why we should not extend uh alcohol sales on Sunday from six AM to ten AM? And that's bringing in line with what we have for. Well, so Monday through Thursday is six AM until one, Friday and Saturday is six AM until two. And my thought is that Sunday, I understand historically why that's in place, but many of us go to church before that, after that, other nights or don't go to church and I don't think so. If someone's got that brunch.
There's some pretty common ordinance amongst the cities. I mean, I remember East Moline at least had the same uh, you know, closing prohibition on sales. I mean, I'd have to probably research it. I mean, I think it's kind of a concept to hit the reset button and, you know, let people uh have a break from the weekend party. And I don't, I guess I don't really have a position on one way or the other. I don't see a huge issue with it, but I think it's probably fairly consistent.
All right.
Yeah, as you said, your practice on this whole line, this practice, the chief, um would there be any special concern about on uh?
Wasn't it one time state law?
Yeah.
My my guess, my guess, that's where this.
Yeah, I feel like it was state law.
Now it's really just.
It's yet to hold over.
I mean, at one time, many of it had been around a long time and there was four AM liquor licenses for a long time, so.
I remember those days. I would second, you know, this is not an emotion, I understand that, but I am in favor of also bringing everything to six AM for A and B.
Sorry, Mr. O'Brien was next.
Okay, I had a question, uh if I can get it in there, please. Uh my question was about the, just uh on that previous question, extended hours to three AM. Now, didn't we just have a incident at, that was pretty late, was it the eighteen forty-eight, was that really late at night?
Two AM.
Two AM. And I'm questioning, I mean, what, if we leave them open that late, I mean, obviously, nothing good happens after midnight if you're out and about.
It's a popular song somewhere, right?
Yeah, so I think it's a country western song somewhere. But um are we driving that's that back into the neighborhoods and are we, I mean, because we have, I mean, in my, below the hill, there was a wild party that it was as a kind of a residence, you know what I'm talking about, slash residence business that a guy has that uh kinda drove that element into the neighborhood in the late night. Slash residence business that a guy has that, uh, kind of drove that element into the neighborhood in the late night hours. Uh, so are we better off to maybe leave them open? I don't know. I mean, if we have an ordinance, it's gonna, we have fourteen of these places that are gonna be open till three a.m. So.
My, my personal opinion, although I'm, I'm aging, uh, quickly, is I'm not a huge fan of three a.m., but I also lived through the four a.m.s, wasn't a huge fan of that, as we, you know, Rock Island eliminated their three a.m. licenses because of the problems that they're having in the district. Uh, we certainly see the longer places are open with more alcohol at a commercial establishment there. I mean, it's just common sense, right? There's more problems there. Um, the incident you asked me originally about that actually happened a little bit before two a.m. So I mean, obviously, uh, um, you know, it's late, but I mean, it wasn't in the, in the two to three a.m. hour that you're speaking of there. We have had issues, uh, at two fifty at some of the other three a.m. areas at closing time of the three a.m. hour. I don't, I'd have to research, I guess, other areas, uh, I mean, I would be guessing on your question about does it drive it into the neighborhoods? My anecdotal thought would be no, because, and people could do that anyway, right? The people could, could, and you know, that was popular back in the day after the three a.m. license, they'd have the after hour spots. Um, I think those are, you know, a different consideration. Most of those, I mean, even though I know you're talking about a, a problem, those are few and far between and they're smaller groups or maybe, you know, ten, twelve people there or whatever, you know, bars can hold seventy-five hundred, two fifty, you know, so.
Uh, just so you are aware, I haven't had a lot of, we haven't had a lot of those requests for three a.m. options. But there was one and I turned it down because as in consultation, there's no need for us to increase that when our neighboring cities are, are reducing it. You know, we don't need to be the place they all, so.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion today? Yes, Mr. Went.
So one of the, the discussions we had at one point was a one location or one address having multiple, um, licenses, different classes. How is that addressed in, in this?
We really haven't. It's been addressed through enforcement. I'm sorry, Your Honor, I did it again.
No, it's fine. You're the clerk.
You do it.
Well, and actually, the mayor did it this time, so she actually asked both of them and, and for those of you that maybe don't know that. So we had two, um, two properties that had conveni- that convenience store licenses, like Class CC licenses. And then they were issued a second license, an A and a B.
Yeah.
When they added gaming, so a restaurant and a tavern license. So they're the only two locations in the city. We have these dual licenses. But, um, they did come in and for hearings and talked through the fact that they needed, if they were gonna continue to hold that restaurant or tavern license, they had to operate as such, per the definition in the code. So they've, they developed a plan. They had fourteen days to submit that and they did. And then they had another period of time where they have to start making the changes. Um, when we had the training on the fourteenth, I did have one of those, um, owners come up and were very excited about all the things that they've been doing and adding. So, um, we'll be asking our inspections department to go out and take a look at that and see.
The restaurant one or?
That was the restaurant one. Mm-hmm.
Okay. So case by case, case by case dealing with that, you know, but if there are other issues surrounding that that you wanna?
No, it, uh, it was just a weird quirk in our.
It was.
Ordinance, but this, I guess that quirk could pop up again because that there's not a prohibition from it or?
Well, um, it wouldn't with Class B because that is case by case whether we give out Class B licenses now. So I guess we could look a little more closely at how we can.
Cause a Class A becomes a much broader.
It really broad boils down to what is that definition that is the source of the enforcement? Or that which all enforcement is based upon, right? That's what it sounds like to me.
That becomes my concern is then, okay, then.
I agree with you. We have to take a look at that.
Uh, the other is, it looks like for the, the Class H is really the old Class K.
Yeah.
Okay, and it says non-renewable in twenty twenty-six, so that's the, the sunset. It's not a big deal, but I, I think like in one of the points, it still talks about K licenses. Oh, in K, okay. In K, it talks about K licenses, it shouldn't say H licenses, but I just wanted to make sure that that's. Cause it may be something where then we use that definition as a prohibited one for Class A or something. And then that, then that way you say, no, your act is, is that thing that is prohibited from now on, I don't know, it's just like, since it will be in the code.
Yeah, sorry, no, it's, Mr. Schmidt.
Um, one item related to the items in, uh, in the, the Class B, all, all three, B, BBB, is we, we in identifying the principal purpose, we identify it as sale of alcoholic liquor in, I guess that's on, on the Class B. To a point, and, and I know we, we talked, we're gonna keep looking at that principal incidental definition, but I, I think, uh, for the primary business of a tavern, I don't know why we would include food as well in that definition. Or I understand that we don't want restaurants to be operating as taverns and kind of going down, but if, if a tavern decides to put up on a great menu and cheap beer, they should be allowed to do that in my opinion.
I, I, I agree with you, a, a hundred percent. I think we should throw food in there as.
Yeah, I think actually under BBB, food is included, um, as their revenues and so that made sense.
No, no, BBB, it says the revenue derived from food and or video game, if applicable, shall be incidental.
But yeah, you're right. I, I guess I'd like to see food moved into their primary business even for.
It should count towards it. I, I, I'm a hundred percent for that.
But it creates the most flexibility for business evolution, but yes.
Yeah, cause if you're a bar and all of a sudden you got the best burgers in town and.
And in a way, we don't want to stop, I think.
Yeah, oh yeah, the steak.
And their grandfather didn't have any of these laws.
White horse.
White horse.
Yeah.
We're out to control the liquor. We're not out to control the food in the same way.
Here, can I come in?
Yes. And actually, I'm really glad that came up because yesterday I received notice that Rock Island Elks are moving to Moline and they're planning to have alcohol as part of the meal. So that will become an issue for them as a members only club. And they're, most of their sales, they think will be from food, so I'm glad you made that point.
I, I think that's great. That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timmy.
I have a slew of three questions and you just gave me one. So with the, uh, the fraternal, uh, uh, cl- the clubs, oftentimes I'm thinking of the, uh, the East End Club. They have the bar on one side and the, the conference room on the other. Is that, and that qualifies as special use because they're physically separated by a wall? Cause they, they oftentimes rent out that space to host event and you go back and forth between the bar. So that's just a rhetorical question. Question, is that, is that, does that require a special use permit? Or because it's a separate, I guess it's not rhetorical.
Cause it feels very separate.
It is very separate. So that's fair.
I don't, in, in that case, they would not be, you would, you would buy your stuff, it like.
Yep.
You don't go back and forth when there's an event, cause the event is the event.
Fair, fair.
Right? And the bar is the bar.
Um, I guess.
But people from the event go and get.
That's true.
Yeah, we've never really regulated that differently than they're just a, a club and that's the way they're set up. I know that, um, East End, um, owners or liquor manager at the training came up and said, we're looking to put our gaming in a separate room so that when you come in, you can just go directly to the left and then kind of keep kids who are coming in for special parties away from seeing that. I think that's something the council probably would like.
Are you saying, like, does Class Triple B allow them enough flexibility for that situation or you're just wondering?
I'm, I'm kind of wondering if there is enough flexibility because they do rent out that hall often and I'm sure they're not alone. And so do they require special use permits or because of the physical separation, are they okay?
I would suggest that with, um, an organization like that where they kind of thrive on these special parties all the time, that maybe we write that into the definition of that.
That way, it's, it's outside of the three.
Yeah.
Times, yeah.
Uh, and, and then I guess, uh, my next question of three, uh, the last one's really easy. Uh, with these Class Hs, it does say, uh, the non-renewal in twenty twenty-six. Are ordinance header, headers binding or does that need to be in the body?
It needs to be in the body, cause we specifically says that our headers.
Okay, so then that was just a call out. Lastly, are these just going to be instantly transitioned once this is enacted, the existing licenses?
I would propose that renewal.
Okay, so they'll be, they'll last until renewal time, sure.
Administrative night.
Thank you.
Any further questions or commentary on this? Topic tonight. Okay, thank you so much. We will continue with our work on that. Is there any public comment, Chief? Nobody's here. All right, so I've called the council to order for a regular meeting. Pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is there an invo- uh, invocation, Alderman? Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, request approval of committee of the hall and council meeting minutes of April fifth, two thousand twenty-two, council meeting minutes of April twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and appointment to main during committee of the hall on April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty oh six dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-four personnel of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section twenty-four dash thirty-two oh seven, appendix one, by adding a job description for land bank program manager. Resolutions. Council Bill ten eighty dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a contract with Walter D. Lott Incorporated for motor fuel tax, section twenty-two dash zero 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 dash zero zero GM, twenty twenty-two asphalt program for the amount of nine hundred ninety-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty cents. Council Bill ten eighty-one dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution approving a supplemental resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for Motor Fuel Tax, section number twenty-two dash zero 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 dash zero zero GM, twenty twenty-two asphalt program for the amount of one hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred dollars and eighty cents. Council Bill ten eighty-two dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a contract with Langman Construction Incorporated for motor fuel tax, section twenty-two dash zero 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 dash zero one GM, twenty twenty-two asphalt maintenance program for the amount of one hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Council Bill ten eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution approving a supplemental resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for Motor Fuel Tax, section number twenty-two, zero 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 one GM, twenty twenty-two asphalt maintenance program for the amount of three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Council Bill ten eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution approving a supplemental resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for section twenty-one dash zero zero two seven nine, zero zero RP, Twenty-Sixth Avenue, thirty-eight hundred block of Forty-first Street in the amount of two hundred forty thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents. Council Bill ten eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the seating of home rule volume cap. Council Bill ten eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution approving a final change order with Emery Construction Incorporated for project number thirteen forty-seven, twenty twenty-one alley reconstruction for the amount of twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. Council Bill ten eighty-six. I'm sorry, I skipped one. Council Bill ten eighty-seven is next. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a contract with Davenport Electric Contract Company, project number thirteen seventy-three dash, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two annual traffic signal replacement for an amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and thirteen cents. Council Bill ten eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing interim city engineer to accept a proposal for professional engineering services with Jawal Hamilton Associates Incorporated for engineering corridor traffic study regarding project number thirteen ninety, Avenue of the City's traffic study, for a time and material not to exceed amount of ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Council Bill ten eighty-nine dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the approval of supplement number one regarding the preliminary engineering service agreement for motor fuel tax with Hutcheson Engineering Incorporated for the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Council Bill ten ninety dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the approval of a supplemental resolution for maintenance under Illinois Highway Code for Motor Fuel Tax, section number twenty-one dash zero 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 zero, zero zero GM, twenty twenty-one asphalt program for the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Council Bill ten ninety-one dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the municipal services general manager to submit a commitment for bidding growth salt at the Illinois Department of Central Management Services for four thousand tons that would commit the city to purchase a minimum of thirty-two hundred tons and the ability to purchase up to forty-eight hundred tons for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three winter season.
Your Honor, move for approval, consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, and seconded by Mr. Went. Uh, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Non-consent agenda, second reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty oh five dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending chapter four, alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances, increasing the number of Class CC licenses in the city at the request of Innovative Landscaping and Maintenance LLC doing business as QC Quick Stop.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Went. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Nay.
Waldron?
Nay.
Six ayes, two nays. And that motion passes. Resolutions. Council Bill ten seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a second amendment to the Heritage Place Parking Structure Lease Agreement between the City of Moline and Heritage Place Associates LLC, extending the agreement through the thirty-first day of December, twenty thirty-seven. And I think, Your Honor, you're looking for two motions. One to approve the, um, updated second amendment to the lease agreement.
We need, if council so desires, to update what came through COW last time, so yeah, we need that.
Move to approve, second.
All right, so you want to approve the one that goes to twenty thirty-seven.
I'm sorry, who's the second?
Uh, Mr. Timian. The discussion, Mr. Went.
Uh, well, actually, I, I'd like to hear from the staff. I know that some additional information is kind of coming light through this, this process. I'd like to hear their.
Yes, the overview. Yes, please, Mr. Vitas.
Sure, I'd be happy to. And with us this evening, of course, Mr. Stranland is here representing the, uh, the property owner, Samco Properties, I guess, Samco LLC, if I'm not mistaken. Um, we've had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Stranland and review the, uh, the original submittal, uh, which would have taken the lease out to twenty fifty-one. Uh, in further discussions with Mr. Stranland, it came to the conclusion that the lease itself needed to go an additional, as it's laid out in the second amendment, uh, an additional six years beyond what remains on the original lease, which was thirty-nine years. So the original lease was thirty-nine years and this lease would, this would extend that lease for an additional six years uh, to the benefit of Samco Properties so that they could go forward with the leasing of the sixth floor of the building to the U.S. government. And they have that lease in hand and that's where that sits at this point. Um, beyond that, uh, there is the issue of the maintenance of the facility itself. And I think there's been, there was some confusion. Historically, there's been some confusion as to how that maintenance was supposed to work, specifically sections eight point one and eight point two. So as we reviewed that as well, that is included in there and it is understood whose responsibility it is going forward uh, for not only the capital investment, capital investments being the city's obligations, which we have done once in, in order to maintain that garage, I believe somewhere to the tune of almost eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I think we replaced all of the lighting as well as some of the decking inside and some of the spalling, uh, which is basically capital investment in the garage that's required. Uh, but then the issue of routine maintenance, you know, painting or cleaning or minor repairs. Um, I think there was some confusion. I think that's pretty much been cleared up, I think, going forward. I think that's pretty much been cleared up, I think, going forward. Uh, Mr. Stranland, representing his client, understands and has agreed in principle that we would, uh, move forward without the city incurring some of the expenses it has historically incurred. Uh, up until now, we've probably incurred from since inception of the, uh, construction and through the first lease and through to date, uh, close to $800,000 in in maintenance. Um, routine maintenance based upon extrapolating information, uh, in terms of what is in Section 8.1 versus Section 8.2. Uh, we know that it's about $2,500 a month, uh, going forward in terms of just simply maintaining it in accordance with the lease. So, that's the number that was calculated based upon removing, uh, utility costs, removing snow removal costs, those things which are the landlord's responsibility, in this case, the the lessor, who is the city. Um, and I think that's where we're at. I think going beyond this particular lease, uh, as it exists, um, there's nine years remaining, very specifically, um, on the leases that, you know, that are available to Samco. Um, there are tenants, of course, occupying the spaces now. I don't know, uh, what those leases are or what the length of time is for those leases, if they coincide with the the 39-year provision or not. We don't know that answer. Maybe Mr. Stranland can speak to that tonight. But it's our recommendation that we do approve the agreement going forward this evening. Uh, the US government is anxious to get started on, uh, renovations to the space. Uh, Samco Properties has been in contact with, obviously, with, uh, with the government. Uh, and they're looking to make those leasehold improvements to, uh, the Heritage Place property. And, uh, we don't want to delay that. But I think, um, going forward, if there's leases that go beyond the 39th year that have not been negotiated at at the present time, I think it behooves the city then to at least have the opportunity to meet with Samco, Mr. Stranland, or whoever represents Samco at that time. We don't know who that will be, um, or when that will even happen because there are empty floors in the building, and our goal is to fill space. Uh, that we would bring those back, and we would deal with those on a case-by-case basis. And I think that's, I think it's fair to Samco. I think it's fair to the city and the taxpayers. Um, it was a a great investment, and it has paid debit dividends through time. But like all commercial office retail spaces, uh, filling those spaces is a difficult task now. Not just in Moline, but in cities like Chicago and all across the United States. It is a major topic of discussion that goes on, uh, in the in the real estate world as to how to fill commercial office space since people are working remotely. As you know, we have two major corporations headquartered here. Um, and, uh, and their spaces are not occupied full-time. And in some cases, I'm understanding that they will not be occupied full-time in the future. So, you know, those are things that we have to have on the radar screen down the road and thinking about adaptive reuses possibly. But for tonight's purposes, we're recommending approval going forward based upon, uh, that which I have entered into the record this evening.
Thank you.
Here for any questions?
Question, Mr. Macias?
Um, yeah, I had the opportunity to tour the place, and, um, I had never been in there. And it's obvious that this whole structure, the the parking was made for this building. And if we can get, um, spur more people to work downtown, that's just going to be a plus for everybody. Um, so, yeah, I'm I'm in in support of, um, calling an amendment to, um, adopt the language that that's proposed with the, um, with the extension to December 31st, 2037.
I'll second that.
Call, what do you mean?
Try, um, um, I I make a motion.
That amendment is on the floor now. That was Mr. O'Brien and.
That was the original.
The original, that I think that was the original.
The amended is with the Section 3.3.
I think he.
He he moved to to the amendment, and I checked on it. He was, he said he was talking about the.
Oh, the amendment, I apologize. Yeah, same, I thought it was the original that you.
Yeah.
You, okay.
Okay.
I'll retract that from the floor.
Mr. Went?
Um, thank you, Your Honor. Um, so, I too could not agree more that that, uh, that we want this this tenant to move in. We want, uh, um, uh, to encourage development downtown and and those sorts of things. But as a council, we have to think strategically on on how to do how to do this. And with my conversation I had with, uh, um, uh, legal counsel and and the, uh, city administrator earlier, um, a couple of things had been brought forth that is information that we don't know. Um, like, for instance, we still don't know how many parking spots that government entity actually needs. We do know now that they don't need 30 years, but they only need 15. Nine under the current agreement, and then they're asking for an additional six. Um, we, as the stewards of the taxpayers of Moline and the, um, assets of the city of Moline, this parking ramp is one of the most expensive assets that that the city has. And and to Alderman Macias' points, I completely agree. We want to leverage this to encourage as much development as we can downtown. And in our comprehensive plan, right now, we have an infill site just to the east of this, that that empty parking lot. Our comp plan calls for a multi-use, multi-story development right there. Right now, my concern is that this parking ramp is underutilized. It may have been built for this building. It may be overparked for how it it currently is. But in our conversations, and this is why I'm a little surprised with with the recommendation. I I thought the recommendation front was going to be. Do you have those four points?
I, so I, I believe that Mr. Vitas was taking a recommendation to limit the extension or the second amendment to the lease to just the number of spaces needed for the sixth floor tenant.
I I will make that motion to make that amendment.
That is correct.
Right, and then to confirm that the lessee would, um, is responsible fully for maintenance pursuant to 8.2.
That's also correct.
So, I I believe that that is the way that we satisfy council concerns about, are we, you know, is this too much for what is actually needed? And does that save the, uh, the opportunity for other parking uh, as downtown for the develops while in encouraging and supporting existing tenants in in, um, the lessee's opportunities?
So, so, wait a second, please. So, could you please read out what the recommendation is on that portion? That would be an amendment to an amendment.
Right, so it would be a motion to agree to the second amended lease with the following additions that, uh, lessee confirms that it is and will be responsible for maintenance as described in 8.2 of the lease and to limit the extension of the second amended lease to the number of spaces associated with the sixth floor tenant of the Heritage Place.
So, that's that's the recommended amendment to an amendment. Is there a motion for?
And I'll I'll make that motion that.
Motion by Alderman Went, is there a second? Alderman Moyer? Discussion? Mr. Went?
Yeah, in in through this conversation, I think that this is meets all the objectives. We make sure that this this tenant moves in, uh, that they are, uh, uh, they're they're taken care of, um, that we don't miss out on them, uh, that too, that the $80,000 that the taxpayers have paid in maintenance over the last three years, that per the lease is clearly the, uh, uh, the tenant's responsibility, that they confirm that they're going to be able to do that. But it also then protects us with flexibility moving forward. We want to work with them. They, we want them to to fill this building up and 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 do all of those things. But we also want the flexibility if we have a new development next door that's residential, and we need a couple of those parking spots that we can utilize this. So, I I think what the, uh, uh, the city staff, the the city administrator and and the attorney had come up with is, I think, the best of both worlds that, uh, that meets all of our objectives.
Sir, Timian?
Uh, I, has this, uh, been run by the lessee at all? Or is this, okay?
Only only just a few minutes.
I is it, uh, out of order to ask, uh, their opinion during this? While you're here?
That's what, yeah. That's, I'm I'm fine with that if you'd like to weigh in on this, for sure.
They're the petitioners, so absolutely.
Yeah.
I came, uh, I thought to answer questions about an amendment that was negotiated, and I was told to be recommended tonight on Friday. Uh, so I just heard about this amendment. I I stepped out just a minute to see if I could contact the landlord. Uh, not even to. So, uh, if you're asking me to accept it, uh, you know, the council's free to do what they think is in the city's best interest. I've much appreciated the time staff has provided to me during the month of April. Uh, my Alderman, uh, Macias, uh, Alderman Macias came, and and I heard I heard him speak a minute ago. Uh, the, uh, the change is designed, apparently, for one lease. And, uh, that wasn't the 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 original request. The original request was more expansive than that. And it, as the letter I wrote in response to questions, I said, uh, that the thrust behind the request was that lease. That was the thrust. It wasn't the only thrust. Uh, so, uh, you know, th- this council can, uh, act on, uh, a proposed amendment or ma- make a recommendation, and then we could come back, uh, you know, to see where it leads. Uh, that's the best I can do, uh, with the short notice. So, uh, the, uh, the original, uh, well, the 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 agreement that I, uh, conveyed to the client, or the recommendation that I conveyed to the client, correct on the wrong margin, was an extension to 2037. Uh, without getting into the details of the tenant lease, that was what, uh, I conveyed on Friday. Am I correct?
That is what was brought before.
Yes, and so, earlier tonight, you know, I'm hearing that it's measured by spaces. As to the underutilization, uh, I I sense that the council says, or some of the council says, there's a problem. You know, having having been experienced with the city, uh, and having a lot of respect for the staff, where there's a problem, there should be a study. Basic. Uh, and so, as I understand it, presently, there is no parking study. I've made inquiry that goes to this point. There there are parking studies, but as to this point, the computation is a design computation made for the construction of the building. That computation, and and we can bring the architect who did the most recent remodeling, and that would be Jeff Dizmer. I I think most of you are familiar with Jeff Dizmer. I checked with him today, and he validated the fact that the computation gets to close to three, uh, spaces per hundred, no, per thousand square feet, which is on the low range of offices. So, the the ramp is designed for the building. That, uh, has proven true, uh, with regard to the occupancy when it's full. I think many people remember when Deere Company filled the building, it was fully consumed, the ramp was fully consumed, uh, during the business hours. Another, uh, perception that was, uh, attended to and agreed to on, uh, Friday, related to, uh, the perception that the city hasn't had, uh, public benefit, or at least sufficient public benefit for the money that it it has spent. Uh, it might be appropriate for me to do this at a later time, but, um, there's information on that point that is, uh, consists of observations in the month of April. And and that was since the time I first appeared. Uh, and if I may distribute a handout, Your Honor?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'll ask you to pass these down. I'll explain.
Thank you.
What it relates to. You have enough? What the what the handout is, is, uh, four pages. Sorry.
Do you have one?
Sure.
Oh.
Sure.
Thanks.
Let me know if anybody is short.
You have one. Clark has one for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, next.
I don't know.
No, you you look.
Oh, here. This is.
So, the observation, uh, that, uh, has been made that where it relates to the public use is, uh, from the city website, uh, entitled, uh, first page is, uh, "The Event Parking Designated by the City." Uh, I'll think, give you a moment to digest. What you'll see is the, uh, the middle red block is the site we're talking about. It it has a band on it that says Heritage Place, and it's it's labeled Tax Layer, uh, Center, Overflow Parking. Uh, that, uh, connotes, uh, the fact that it's regularly used for the public. Uh, what you, uh, see next is signage that has been in place for a good long time, probably five years or more because it says I Wireless Center. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And it is wrong.
Yes, you're right, Mr. Alderman Went. It is wrong because he has read the lease, which I appreciate. Uh, he has, he has read the lease that was made long ago, and and the relationship of the parties, in my view, and I think in the city attorney's view and the city administration's view, is basically a relationship that has been working. It's a public-private partnership that has been working. And you'll see from the signage, as Mr., as Alderman Went points out, it's wrong. But the the lease says, uh, for the tenants, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. But as I explained it when I was here last, the tenants are told, at least the tenants that occupy by the space that I occupy, uh, to is, it's 5:00. And and I'm sure law enforcement knows that it's 5:00 because, uh, people start assembling downtown. This is a good thing. They start using the restaurants and the bars, and and the, uh, the migration, uh, is then to the event of the arena. Uh, but the the point is, it's a wonderful asset, not just for a tenant, not just for, uh, a building owner. It's for the public, and it's recognized as for the public. And, uh, what you'll next see, I think, on page three, is is more signage. Why is that signage there? Good question. Uh, I think, I'm spec. I think, I'm speculating, uh, I haven't investigated, but I'm thinking that the Tax Layer Center wants people to come to the Tax Layer Center and not look for the I Wireless Center. And so, uh, they, some, someone puts a sign there with each event. And, uh, for certain events that are deemed to be sold-out events, those events, uh, they also staff, uh, with someone who charges for parking. Those charges are divided, uh, between the city and the Tax Layer Center. Finally, and I'll, I'll, I'm trying to move this along. Finally, uh, what you'll see is the, uh, a photograph from the seventh floor. It's not a great photograph because it's taken through glass. Nobody climbed up on the roof and, and took it, uh, in a, in a better, uh, way. But, uh, that depicts, uh, Snoop Dogg's, uh, performance night. And, uh, I have, I have a collection of other photographs, but, uh, I, I'm representing to you, if, and especially if anyone was there, they would know, that, um, the city served the public well. And this building served the public well because that is the upper deck. The entire ramp was full, fifteen dollars a car, divided between the Tax Layer Center and, uh, uh, the city. You know, I, I can go on about the contributions landlord makes, but the, the, the simple request is that the city adhere to a recommendation that was prepared to be made on Friday, that the, uh, extension go to 2037. That was the request. That's what I forwarded to. That was the recommendation. That's what I forwarded to, uh, the landowner. That's what I had the authority to say could be executed. You know, with, with regard to measuring it by the lease, it puts, uh, it, it, it's a different, it's a different proposal. And I think everyone would appreciate that it's quite, it's different. And, uh, it, it requires that every tenant justify parking, not based on an architect design, but based upon, I don't know. It's, it's a really, it's a, it's a moving target. But, you know, we, we appreciate the relationship that the city has with this property. It's been a good relationship. It's been honored to the point that we didn't propose altering any of the other provisions. I, I, I would say that if, when you read the lease, and I know, I know some of you have, it's very, I, I didn't draft it. It was five, six attorneys ago, six mayors ago. But there's a, it's a, it's very basic in this way. If there is dissatisfaction, rising to the level of default, if any maintenance is not adhered to, it's the obligation of one party or the other, there's a very specific provision, and this isn't going to surprise you, especially if you're a landlord, or a tenant for that matter, you have a duty to give notice and there's a right to cure within thirty days. To my understanding, again, I'm, I'm fairly recent to this, there has never been any such notice, not once. That's a good thing. But it's not necessarily a good thing if you're measuring what you are looking toward in the future in a good relationship and saying there's been a violation, there's been unfairness. That's unfortunate because the lease would require that kind of notice. So with that said, I, I apologize for not having the authority to say, thank you very much. This is a great proposal, but it isn't what we asked for. Maybe we'll have the opportunity, I, I mean, you can tell me if we have the opportunity to come back or, or, uh, here, try to answer more questions that would support the original, not even the original, the, the, the request of last Friday.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt, and then I saw you.
And this is not a direct question for you. It's, it's to council in that. So I understand wanting to look and say, hey, maybe if we've not been following through and looking at that, uh, maintenance in the correct way and that we want to ensure that there's an understanding, we will be doing that going forward. I have no problem with that. I'm glad we've sought out the proper timelines, um, on the extension. But I think separating based on one tenant and then require, because that, it gets in the way of operating their business. And in, in a way that says every time you want to renew, you want to extend, you want to bring back the lease, you're gonna, as was said, and you got to be back at council saying, can we please have those spots? And not giving them the opportunity to fill those spots and not having to be able to do it without us getting involved. And if we need to have a conversation about utilization and about whether there's a handful of spots or a group of spots that are not being used that could come back to the city, that's a different conversation, but I am not interested in anything that's going to draw us away from one tenant over the other tenants. That is us meddling too much into a business rather than letting that business do them and us just deciding to go forward with an agreement or not.
I have one quick question if I could. Is it fair to understand a utilization question as, there are still other floors empty, correct?
Correct.
So, so under utilization.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So underutilization could possibly be caused by under occupancy of this building?
Absolutely. And I want to thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, for, I think you attended an open house. Maybe, uh, other staff did, maybe other, uh, council that. You'll, you'll know from that, uh, and those of you who haven't been there, I will say, second floor vacant. Fifth, uh, fifth floor vacant. Sixth floor vacant. And, uh, that has not stopped the landlord from remodeling, investing and not coming to the city for, for relief, but, but just gutting it out. And, and, uh, I'll note, going all the way back to the beginning, I know, I know who has, has had the listings for that. And I looked back. And I, I can tell you, it, it's always advertised with ramp parking. Not a surprise. Go to the other vacant office properties downtown. They will advertise parking along with the building. And, you know, it's not a secret. You must know. They don't own that parking. And, you know, and every deal is different. This one, yes, it, it was what we talked about when I was here before in terms of the economic terms. But, you know, I have a diagram outside this room that dates back to the original lease. What was it called? Super Block. Why was it called Super? I'd say because it was first. Uh, it was the incentive. And, and so, uh, with regard to the vacancy, you're absolutely right. Yeah, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that goes to.
I just wanted to understand that piece alone. Mr. Went.
Thank, thank you, your honor. And, and I couldn't agree with you more. I, 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 I think that we need to understand this utilization and, and to Alderman Schmidt's, uh, point about, you know, if we need to come back and try to figure that out, I think we should have that flexibility. If we pass the underlining where the lease goes for another nine years and then we give another six-year extension on it, we're now fifteen years out in the future before we can have that conversation because, or we have any leverage for that conversation because you're giving it all away right now. And so, to that point regarding parking utilization, part of the reason why we, we don't know this is, quite honestly, I had sent, I think the day after the last presentation, questions regarding what the current utilization is. How many parking spots we have? How many parking spots are they using? All of those sorts of things and have received no answers on. Uh, I asked, and understandably so, how many spots we're talking about for this particular lease? And was told, well, we could provide that, but only in closed session. And, and I understand all of those things. And so I, I think what we're being asked to, much like the last time when we were asked to, to extend it to 2051, and then all of a sudden we started asking some questions and it was like, oh, we don't need 2051. We can go back to 2037, which is much better for us flexibility-wise and, and those sorts of things. I think what we should probably do is table this until we can get that, some of those information. Because I think we're making a decision here based on not full information. And, and, and I understand where, where Roger is coming from. It, it is working. This location for one dollar, they get to use a parking ramp, which is amazing for a building. I, 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 I know that in a, in a, uh, place right across the street, um, that if a law firm was renting in there, they then had to pay, uh, to, to park many other people in our rent. And so the landlord gets additional rent because it's just built into, into that. And so I think understanding what is going on here is, is key to this. And so, actually, I will make a, uh, motion to a table and, and tell our next meeting, hoping that we'll get the additional information to make a, a proper decision.
Is there a second? Well, again, motion fails for lack of a second. So we're still talking about the amendment to the amendment. A new comment?
Roger, you guys still have the position where you can't divulge to us how many parking spots that the new tenant needs?
Well, I'm not, I haven't negotiated that lease.
I thought you guys had a lease in hand.
I have a lease in hand. I didn't negotiate. I, I, so there's a, there's a formula that must exist with the GSA as to how many they're ultimately going to need. Today, they met with the contractor. Actually, I should take that back. The architect met with a contractor, not the contractor. Because I understand that as a GSA lease, this contractor they had in mind was going to, uh, self-perform quite a bit of the work. And, uh, I'm not sure that the GSA wants it to be structured that way. I, um, will go back to the lease, which is in my briefcase, and I'll look for that. It was the landlord's preference that there be some degree of proprietary information that the landlord was entitled to, given the prospective tenant. It was my understanding that, uh, if you wanted to see the lease, which I provided, I think Mr. Vitas will say he, he looked through the lease.
Saw the front cover.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll give, I have.
Be specific.
All right. Well, I, I, I'm perfectly comfortable giving you and legal counsel the lease tonight. And we can go into it and, and find the number of spaces in that lease. We can do that. If that's an important question. My contention is that the building is designed for the ramp and the ramp is designed for the building. You can do the math. And, and so if we're measuring tenant by tenant, then, you know, the landlord right now has nine years left and can make a better case perhaps after there's another lease and another lease. The way this was provided through 2037 is, there was a provision that says the parties contemplate the possible future need to negotiate in good faith from time to time. That doesn't mean 2037. That means anytime. On the subject of further extension of the lease, upon the expiration of the term, da-da-da-da-da, then there's another desire to, to, uh, enter into good faith negotiations. If the city is insecure with this relationship, I don't know if it's lack of trust or if it's driven by economics, but if the city's insecure, I, I would modify those provisions to invite the city to come back and, and, and say, hey, wait a minute. You, we extended to 2037. We thought that you would fill up a larger portion of that ramp than you have. Let's, let's cut it back. You know, so in any event, I think the parties, uh, through legal counsel, through, uh, city attorney, through, uh, city administrator, worked pretty hard to get to the point we were at Friday with the 2037. As to the unanswered questions, I have a letter that was sent within days of my last appearance that went to the city administrator, went to legal counsel. Ultimately, I understood Mr. Went, Alderman Went, did not get it and I sent it to him. I have a red line that, to the best of my ability, addressed the conversations we had. And so the pattern of practice that, that I've, uh, followed is that the channel of communication needs to go to mayor, city administrator and legal counsel. And from that point is dispersed to the extent that it's appropriate to all counsel, not, not just.
To your point, to your point, that, that, really to get it back on track here, you're saying that there's an opportunity to talk more about these specifics or we move forward as was intended. So that's where things are at. Correct.
Pardon me?
That's where things are at. We either move forward as is intended or we move forward with a little more information from you. However, what I've heard and read previously is that, you, you, as you mentioned here, the landlord didn't want to have to divulge everything about the lease because of.
Because it's a GSA lease.
Right, exactly.
Because there's so many contingencies, because it has not been publicly identified at this point. I have the lease with me. I'll be happy to share it with legal counsel, with city administrator, with you, mayor. And then you can make the determination. And I've pointed out, you have the authority to go into closed session, I believe, if it relates to pricing for, uh, for this. I'm not sure that it can stay within bounds of pricing because the discussion seems to, you know, uh, go to a number of other issues. But, you, you know, there, there are, there's a mechanism for that kind of thing, to the extent that it's relevant to this request.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Based on, on this presentation and the information that you know, I, I guess I'd like to ask the city administrator and the city attorney, do you stand by the recommendation? Or do you think that the recommendation that you made, uh, is inappropriate?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in because nobody else is going to. I've known about this project since last summer. And I've kept this confidential since last summer. Specifically because I was requested to keep it confidential because of the nature and the sensitivity of who the potential client is. And, uh, we say GSA, but it means to, means more than GSA. And, um, and I'm going to keep that confidence because I don't want this going out publicly until that announcement is due to be released by someone other than this city. It's not our job to release that information. So I won't do that. You know, I was comfortable with the lease as we discussed it on Friday for an additional six years at a dollar. I'm still comfortable with the fact that whoever bears responsibility under the original 1991 lease that expires at year thirty-nine but would be extended by six years, that we would correct the financial burden that the city incurred, which has been pointed out that, and this isn't the only time this has happened. I'm gonna put that out there as well. And we saw it. We researched it. We have invested significant staff time going back to 1991 all the way to date. I've spent more time on this, believe it or not, than many of the other items that we're working on. So I'm happy with the outcome about the six years for a dollar. I'm also happy with the outcome that, you know, this tenant, let's see, will pick up their responsibilities as defined inside this agreement. And that we will amend our agreement with quality construction that they entered into in 2019 because it flies in the face of the original lease in terms of who is responsible for what. So you've got a lot of moving parts here that through time have created this situation that we're confronting right now. You know, in terms of, you know, future leasee, lessies in that building, you know, I say good luck to that. I mean, it, it's, there's two, two empty floors, you know? And there's multiple empty floors in the Kone Tower. And there's empty floors probably even in that John Deere building that we don't know about. But I can tell you that they're empty because I've toured them. I've gone in them. And that's the biggest challenge we have. You know, I want to have the ability to work with not only this landlord of this building, but the other ones when the time comes to try and get businesses back in or adaptively reuse these buildings. Because frankly, the world changed. The world changed in the last thirty, thirty years. You know, in the last three years, it changed dramatically. You know, in the last three years, it changed dramatically. We're not going back. So, you know, as an economic developer, I'm all about incentives and inducements, always have been. You've seen my resume, you know, those deals did not come about because I wasn't afraid to take big gambles, big risks. I'm willing to take that risk with Samco. I don't think Mr. Spiegel is going to walk away from the city. He could have. He chose not to. He chose to stay and even located one of his employees, one of his star employees here permanently. To try and make this work for us. So I mean, if he needs those extra six years based upon what where we're at. I say we give it to him. With the understanding that if we're going to change, you know, if there's gonna be something else that needs to be done over there because we have other demands that come up. Three years from now, maybe. Takes time to develop residential or it takes time to res to develop anything, you know, given today's economy. There's nothing even in the works right now. So, you know, at this point. You know, I'm in favor of going forward with this. I don't think uh. I don't think we're going to, you know, you could ask for what you want, and I guess Mr. Spiegel could come back and reject it. That's 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 what I would say. So if we go with the amendment to the amendment, Mr. Spiegel can come back and say, nope, I'm out. I'm rejecting that. I don't want that deal. That's he has his option. He doesn't have to agree. Or we can amend it. We can go with what was agreed to on Friday and, you know, and and there you have it. Those are your choices. You got two choices. It's Friday's agreement or it's today's proposal. I don't know which way.
What you've said and what Roger said. I would be interested in keeping the tenants we have now. And not driving them away because it sounds like. It like you said, it's a new world we're living in. It's gonna be a hard time filling filling the building anyway. And when that place was built, Deer Company, I think Deer Company, they filled the whole place for, I don't know how long till they got out of there. We're not living in that world for sure. So.
I I I could speak to one lease I have full authority to disclose. That's my own. I mean, you know that uh our law firm. Needed to relocate, didn't really want to relocate, but needed to relocate. Could have gone anywhere. But this landlord. Is a straight shooter and has been fair to us. Now, our lease is ten and twenty. So, you know, you didn't do it. You didn't do, you know, he didn't come back for for us as a full floor tenant. But he's he sees the desperation different times, just as your city administrator has identified. These are different times. We made our move in the throes of COVID. You know, and and we didn't, it wouldn't have been the ideal time to do that. But other tenants have come after us and and he's been working to fill the building. And so, you know, I I wouldn't have advocated for this. You know, had the landlord not, you know, convinced me that there was work to be done here. And so there there are gonna be leases longer than the 2037.
I don't think anybody on this council disagrees with. We want, we want that place filled.
Yeah.
We want, we want people downtown. We want to see pedestrian traffic downtown. And and we we get it, you know, when the Mark has events and everything, but we want to see that. All the time that we have a concentrated place where we want new business and new firms to go in. It's downtown. That's why we had a TIF down there. Again, we had to encourage.
Thank you. All right. I think we need to round that conversation out unless there's anything else that's new.
But thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to add, um, I I had the tour. And just by chance, within a week, I was part of a score chapter meeting. And there was an individual there, one of the mentors, sharing pamphlets of the Heritage Building. So that the other mentors could share with potential individuals starting businesses. So they're obviously doing their work beyond just talking to us, getting out there with potential business. Future businesses to fill some of the other spaces. So beyond just this floor. They're putting in the work and that was just by chance that I happened to be at this meeting and uh somebody else was promoting. Uh, the Heritage Building, which made me very happy to see.
Thank you. All right, so we're prepared to vote on the amendment to the amendment that includes the language about specific numbers of spaces. Do you have that written down from what Margaret read out?
Yes, I do.
Could you just repeat it, please?
Yep. Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Moyer, I believe, moved to approve with the following additions. The lessie is and will be responsible for maintenance and extension of the lease will be limited to the number of spaces. Needed by the sixth floor tenant.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Nay.
Williams?
Nay.
Macias?
Nay.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Nay.
Waldron?
Nay.
Schmidt? Oh, I'm sorry.
Two uh six nays. Thank you. So the amendment to the amendment fails. We're back to the amendment, which is the six year extension with no other changes to the the agreement. All right, hearing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Nay.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Nay.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Six ayes, two nays.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes as amended.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're to miscellaneous business. I will be, yes?
Do we still need a motion to approve 10792222 as amended? That was just on.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Nice catch.
Thank you.
Nice to do.
Thank you. All right, now we need the vote to approve the the agreement as amended.
Motion to approve 10792022 as amended?
Second.
Thank you. Alderman, Timian, followed by Alderman Macias. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Okay, thank you. That. Fine, that it's all said and done now.
Good job.
Okay, to miscellaneous business, I think you will be happy to note today I attended the. Uh, Transportation Policy Committee of Bi-State Regional Commission. And the representative from, it wasn't George Ryan, uh, was one of his associates. Said that the bike bike path will be open by the end of the week.
That is correct.
On the bridge. So yay for for that. Um, that the lighting on the eastbound side should be finished around late spring, early summer. So that's lovely. And the elevator on the other side in Betendorf, uh, there there'll be full letting of that and of course the um. The demolition plans much later this year. Then we also got an update on um the the organizations or the cities. From around the Bi-State region that had applied for the Raze Grants, which if you're not familiar with their cherished grants right now. Um, and uh, happy to see there's a lot of variety in the Quad Cities for for what is being applied for. So I just wanted to give you that little update. Um, Mr. Moyer and I, he's up for the listening posts for second quarter. And we are working on date, a date to find. Uh, probably will make it more of a breakfast or lunchtime thing to catch a different. Audience than the evening ones do. So that's what I have, Mr. Williams.
Amateur historian, Mr. Dave Koeman spoke to the Stevens Park Group uh on Sunday night. At the Dear Wyman House, and he knew an awful lot about the area. And not only Stevens, but for the rest of the city. So if you have a neighborhood group looking for someone to speak. Forty-five minutes to an hour, and I think people stayed hour and a half, two hours afterwards picking his brain, but it was well worth it. And as always, very impressed with Mr. Strandle.
Class act.
Thank you. Mr. Macias?
Thank you. Just want to say that um, uh, the this past week, we had a a number of different concerts and events at the Tax Layer Center. And I actually had the the chance to be at restaurants and um and also the ribbon cutting for Poor Brothers as well last Friday. Um, and it was just great to hear from everybody how happy they were that things are getting back to normal and. Uh, just getting these acts here in the quantities. I, over and over, I heard. Uh, people just thinking that it it's some of the greatest things that that you could have here in our downtown. So. People from all over the quantities, from other parts of other states were flocking and just so many people. Were commenting how great it was to have those events and also Poor Brothers. Um, it was interesting. I had a conversation with one of the owners. How um i- initially they were being asked to go to another city uh elsewhere, not here in Moline, but they liked. The downtown feel. They liked the community that um, the aspect that we have and that there's a realness that they appreciated. And that that was also very good to hear. So I wanted to share that uh because it made me feel proud about Moline. And I'm glad that they chose Moline and and they have a great establishment and they did very well before the Snoop Dogg concert.
Yes.
I can imagine.
Yes. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Um. Uh, I was reminded with the presentations earlier today with Keeping Moline Beautiful Commission. Uh, that a few years ago, we had passed an ordinance that required at fast food or any place with a drive through. That they provide a trash can receptacle that was accessible from the car after you picked up your stuff because. If anybody has gone out and picked up garbage along the uh the roadways near those, you know. The KFC thing gets dumped out as they put the Chick-fil-A thing in or or whatever it is. So. That is an ordinance that's been on the books. There was a timeframe upon which. Uh, new ones had to put it in immediately, and there was a grandfather, plenty of time for existing places to figure it out and put it in. And we are well past that time. And so I don't, if, do we need direction for, do we need to vote on this or can we just ask staff to?
We're we're.
Actually.
I'll send them help.
That'd be awesome. Uh, cause we we have these people who are spending hours a day cleaning up garbage. I mean, Rotary had their thing. I mean, it we all do it all of the time and. These generators of it need to be held accountable so that they they do that. Next, uh, we're about a, the the food licenses are due at the end of this month. And a year ago, we had um, had a conversation asking for some suggestions on how to. Uh, change our food license ordinance. We have a, we have a situation right now where like a place like Rascals Live. Because they have an ice machine, uh, has the same food uh license as Hy-Vee. I I am really looking forward to our May um.
Roundtable.
Roundtable that we can maybe work on getting this, but to all the food licensees out there that. This didn't get addressed this last year. I I apologize. This should have been uh addressed. And with that, that's all I have.
Just you can remind them we didn't have a health inspector till what was it?
No, we we contracted out to the.
Oh, yes, that's true.
So please don't say things like that that are completely inappropriate.
You don't, excuse me, Mr. Went?
To to infer that the health that in in our city was negatively affected because we outsourced.
That's not what I said. What I, it has much more to do with staffing. That's what I talked to about before, and we all know that the people we contracted out to. That were backed up with with lots of things. That's why things weren't getting done. My point is, there's a full story. And we will get to fixing it as we can. Thank you for reminding um us of the needs of our food licensees.
Sure.
Anything further?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Uh, I just wanted to show gratitude for Public Works. Uh, they're already patching sidewalks. Which uh is great to see, you know, it's getting warm. And a big gratitude to the residents of the Fourth Ward for letting me serve. Thank you.
Oh, actually, real quick to to Tony. Uh, thank you very much. There was a water main that broke. I called him and he had his guys out there in like ten minutes up the street. It's a street that probably needs to be uh completely redone because it's potted. Thank you very much for getting your crew out there so fast.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Moyer?
Nothing for me, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Well, when I was at the Snoop concert. Yeah, me and Snoop are like that. Um, I went to the child advocacy breakfast this morning and it was uh. A great event. Uh, Marcy, of course, did a great job and the guest speaker was really good. Can't remember her name, but uh. Were you there? I know the chief was there. J- what was it? Jada Quinn, great speaker. And you know, I I'm glad that the city was able to. Give some money to child advocacy. I hope we can keep doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Waldron?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. Last week at the Rock Island County Waste Management Agency meeting. I have to say Rickema, but uh. Uh, Mike Davis, the son of either Marty or Mitch, I'm not sure which, came to the meeting and announced that Midland Davis will take recyclers. So that was a big news. He said it at the end of the meeting, so the rest of the board didn't get really a chance to talk about it. We did ask him one question, are you gonna take it for the entire county? Yep. It doesn't have to necessarily be just Moline. So that was wonderful news. Uh, I since contacted Mr. Schick for a follow up. One thing is, we all remember, we put some money aside for an ARP money for, I think it was eighty-five thousand for a drop off recycling. And uh, maybe some of that money, if it's legal, can be spent with them to do some advertising. And if we can't give money to a private firm like Midland Davis, maybe we can give it to Rickema. And they can do it. I'm not sure, but Rod was gonna check with Carol Burns to make sure legally what we could do. But I think it would be behoove us to work with them in a partnership to promote that and to get it out. So my meetings at Rickema will calm down.
Yes. So when will they release details on how it's gonna work?
Four, four hundred dollar question. He said, bring it now. See, they're willing to take it now.
They're willing to take it without guidelines to the public?
But is it only during?
It's only during their office hours. Weekend.
So I would suggest, Mr. Vitas, if you could get Mr. Brecht on the detail, get during the details so we can make a statement. Release to our public. That would be good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, Your Honor, uh, we last week had the chance to review the first applications for the childhood uh childcare grant program. Uh, we had those go through and we have one who has been granted the award. They're working through the final details on that and one that was. Sent back with a few more questions, but I think will ultimately result in another uh opportunity for growth, both of them in home daycares. Uh, who are also serving through uh not just for shift uh families. So. Uh, good to see as that's been a slow roll to that start, but we're starting to see those. There are a number of other applications in the pipeline. So just wanted to share that back. Uh, the committee was very um, very aggressive in understanding what meets the criteria of the grant, what doesn't. You know, but these businesses really have a lot of needs that they're bringing to the table, far more than we can ever award them in a grant and. Um, so seeing that opportunity of what we are able to help them with is a great, great way for us to move that forward.
I want to also mention that that application was now put online as of last week, which is gonna simplify the process for. Many, many people who are interested in it. So that's helpful. Okay, um, Mr. Vitas, anything from you?
Nothing to see.
Other staff? Okay, then I believe. And no further public comment? Okay, so we have executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation, five ILCS 120 slash two C 11. Amendment, employment compensation, discipline, performance dismissal of specific employees. Five ILCS 120 slash two C one and property acquisition, five ILCS 120 slash two C five.
Second.
All right, motion by Alderman Williams, seconded by Alderman Went. Roll call, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Your Honor, I need to.